Hello, everybody. Welcome to the work session. I'm turning my microphone on. Work session for July the 2nd, 2019. And this is a special work session. And we have a number of neighbors that are here on one of the issues that is later on in the agenda. But I think that I'm going to ask those that want to speak about the issue to go ahead and let them speak now. And I think staff is familiar with the project that they're interested in. So I've got Dr. Pitts Henson, and Fred Reynolds, and Ted Baker that wanted to speak. So we're welcome. Just come on up to the microphone, and I'll give each of you a few minutes. And if staff wants to make some comments, be perfectly okay.
Mayor Moore, thank you, and members of the Board, Mayor and Alderman. The issue that I understand that's going to be on the agenda is in regard to water control, water management, whatever, from up as far as Bugginut Pig. But I live on Evans Street. Along with my son-in-law, bought several plots or lots there about 10 years ago. There was a lot of discussion about the water control there. And it was our understanding even then, there might be a new line put through there. But we understood why they wanted to get all the houses built before they tore it all up and had to tear it up again for new homes. But I've been to a few meetings here, but I think it's the first time when everybody in the room is here on the same issue. All of these people are my neighbors. And it doesn't take much of a rain to literally flood our street. And there are certain properties on our street that suffer the most. And you can be in ankle-deep water in the middle of the street on a typical hard rain. And a lot of us have video we've taken, or photos we've taken, that, you know, not to present today, but that we could show you if you would like to see them. I'm sure you've seen those before. But my concern is, is that I think this project, even though it seems to be focused in on one street, that's because all the drainage for several blocks, Adams and on up the street, filters into this area. And so therefore, it seems that the problem magnifies itself on our street. And so with all due consideration, I would strongly appreciate and urge good consideration on this issue. We've been here before, several years ago, about three or four years ago, about building on this street. And this was discussed then. And I know that there have been several efforts to try to manage the water on the street. And I think it's all come down to, it's without a new line, without some new sewer system through there, or whatever the water drainage control is, without a project being done to take care of it, we're not going to get any better. And so, thank you for your time, and thank you for your ears, but most of all, for your consideration and support.
Let me hobble up, okay? I got a new hip. Yeah, yeah. Two weeks ago, a little over two weeks ago now. Anyway, thank you, Boma, for letting us speak. And I am actually, I live at the corner of South Margin and Evans Street. But I'm really representing one of my sons, Kerry, who lives at 1110 Adams Street, and who is directly affected by the drainage condition. So being a longtime resident of Franklin, I've watched it over the years as the growth happens. And I think to support our engineers in the city, not only has a growth happened, but we seem to get a lot more intense rainfall than we used to get in the past, it seems to me. But, so the problem, Evans, all the neighbors on Evans, they are getting flooded because there's not enough outflow to the Old Creek Line that gets on down to the stream and to the river. The people on the other side of Folks Street, where my son is, they are also very affected by this. Water stands, after even a good rain that doesn't flood anything, water will stand for four or five days behind those houses. So that's nothing but a mosquito drawl and a health hazard in the city. So there's no, when your engineers are looking at draining this area out and getting the proper volume out of there, and quick enough, they need to look at also getting it across Folks. With that development up Adams Street, we've added a lot of non-pervious surfaces. We get a lot more rain quicker. It's hitting Folks, and it's backing up there, and then it comes across and it backs, it just floods Evans, and sits there and floods. So I guess I haven't looked at exactly what our engineers have designed. I'm sure they're upping the size of the storm sewers to get down that creek line into the river, which is the way to get there. And I would just urge you all to consider bumping up the timeframe on that project. The area is just about fully developed. I think it's close enough that a proper design will take care of the problem. So that's my request. Please bump it up in the schedule. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Nice to see you. So my name's Ted Baker. I live at 1005 Evans Street. I met some of you last week. Alderman, Ms. Martin, you know, talked to me about the situations that we've had here, and what's going on in this, kind of like this downstream of the water flow. What we seemingly continually run into is that, I mean, last week when I came and spoke, I don't need to do that entire talk again about the health hazard, the safety hazard. That all seems very clear to me. And I feel like it was clear to you, considering I had city workers at my house four days this past week, trying to figure out how we could resolve some of this and build a finite solution that would not only serve as a gap, stopgap for today, but also build into the future systems, so we're not then wasting any time, money, and effort that wouldn't then do something for the future. Because my guess is Franklin's not going to stop growing. It seems like it's going to keep growing, which is awesome for all of us who live here, and property values and all those things. But if we don't take care of it along the way, then it just becomes kind of for naught. So I've sat with some of the engineers. I've talked to them this past week when they came. It seems like the situation that is, I would imagine, south of Folks, sorry, my directional issue is not solid here yet, but on the other side of Folks from where I am, there's the runoff that the gentleman was just talking about that came down. And we have a sincere problem there. And then what winds up happening is that kind of begins pooling in Mr. Anderson's yard. And my initial complaint was that that then pools up into my yard and floods my home. And I've had that happen three times since we've moved here, less than two months ago. So the sandbags in front of my house are fun. They're fun, you know? But I'd like to use my garage at some point. So in talking to the engineers, the one thing that came readily available was like installing some sort of pump, if you will, that would absorb the water from the Folks side, and then that would disallow the water to go across Folks and then flood the other side. I've heard them talk about building a retention ditch on Mr. Anderson's, you know, or right now it's his land, but, you know, you guys may be taking that land over and buying it from him and building something there. More than anything, I just want to stress that you're literally sitting amongst all of the people on the street. Whether it's, the gentleman in the back is from Buford. You live on Buford and Evans? And then we have people all along Evans. So if you were to walk down Evans tonight at 5:00 and wave, you would be waving to all of these people. So this isn't just my house that's being affected, or just Mr. Anderson's yard that's being affected. It's actually the entire neighborhood. And again, I go back to my comments of last week, that this is a health and public safety issue. Bottom line, if I've got eight or 10 inches of water outside of my house, my daughter will slip and fall, and she could literally drown. So I go back to the things that we're dealing with here. And this isn't about monetizing anything. This isn't about anybody making money. This isn't about us trying to expand or grow. This is about us being safe. And this is about what the government and the city is supposed to do, and that's put together a healthy, safe place for our families to live. So that's our agenda. That's what we want to push. That's what we want to request. I would argue that a timeline of five years is unacceptable. I would argue a timeline of a year and a half is unacceptable. We need to find a solution now. So that's why it's in this workflow. I appreciate the mayor and our aldermen to take, you know, the rein on that. And we're looking for your support to do that. And again, as the gentleman said, pictures and video, we have all of that. And when you see the true water, you recognize how scary it really is. So that's what we want to achieve, and that's why we're here. So, thanks for the time.
I'd ask engineers if they want to make a comment to inform the board, and then we'll go ahead and start the regular portion of the meeting afterward.
Yes, so this is actually over in the Park, yes, sir. It's over in the Parkview area. It's flooded in this area for many, many years, and we have studies that date back to the 80s. Once a lot of those houses developed there, it got highlighted even more. And I'll say from a staff standpoint, we hear about it and re-hear about it and continue to visit this area every time a property sells and a new property moves in. We're right back out there. The infrastructure out there is very much undersized. It's very mixed match of different pipes and has been piecemealed over many, many years. And there's not a, there's not a good, quick solution to fix this problem. It's been studied three times, and ultimately, the best fix takes a pipe all the way from the Harpeth River, all the way down Church Street, and up into the Evans Street area. And, I mean, best-case scenario, a project delivery of that nature, if the funding was there, is about 10 years, really, to get pipe up into that area. Just to even do Church Street alone would take five years to try to deliver a project of that magnitude for as much infrastructure that's in the street. It is a project that's listed, the Church Street upgrade was listed because of a lot of the water and sewer infrastructure needs to be replaced. And Atmos Gas is also looking at doing a lot of replacement of their infrastructure on Church Street, and we've been coordinating with them. And so it seemed like an opportunity to try to recommend and push that Church Street project to see if there's interest in doing it, to start working towards that long-term solution. But this has been around, this problem's been around for many, many years, and studied three times, and it always comes back with the same solution. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Alderman Blatton.
So you keep talking about Church Street, and I'm not arguing with you, I'm just, I'm not an engineer, but it would seem by the topography and the, what's the word, the splant, because my office was over there for years, if you're going from Ritzy and Parkview, and the flooding is coming from this way, not Church Street, that's where I'm confused. And that's been, there's been redevelopment there on Folks, there's been obviously the redevelopment on Evans, and I'm sure Cummins is probably coming right, pardon the pun, right behind it. Then you look at all the new infill development on Adams, all of that that's changed has been in that area, not Church Street. So that's, I'm not challenging you, but I'm confused as to why Church Street's the fix for something that's happening blocks away.
Yeah, no, thank you for asking that question. So we have to start at the downstream end, and the downstream, and work our way up into the area. The downstream end is the Harpeth River, down Church Street, if you take it straight to the Harpeth River. And so essentially, you've got to start from there and work your way up. We've talked about trying to upsize on Evans Street to try to fix some things.
That's going to push it to Church, is that what you're saying?
It's going to push it to Church, it's going to push it to other streets, and it's going to pop back up during the big storm events. And you're more than likely just going to create another problem for somewhere else, other, in another area of the city.
So, second question, then I'll be done. So if you consider the massive redevelopment of Evans Street a decade ago, I think is what was cited, why would it not have made sense when you're developing that and adding sewer and all that for the stormwater to be put in at that time?
Yeah, looking back on it, the way, the way it happened, we're set up very differently now to avoid these problems.
Gotcha.
But it came through as a plat, and once platted, the infrastructure was essentially there. And so no broader, bigger study was done to highlight this issue and stop the development of it, because the low-lying areas where most of the problems are, is where this redevelopment happened, was where a lot of it flooded and has flooded for many years. And so no, no study was done. They were able to just go pull building permits and go vertical with it, which is what has created a lot of this problem now.
Well, I've seen the sandbags. I drove through there the other day, and I'm like, oh my gosh, you can't even access this garage. I know we've got Fairground, we've got Battle, and to me, this is another one that needs to probably be added as a priority, because the sequence of events that have happened over the last decade, and whatever has exacerbated this to where it's become a real issue.
And simply doing Church Street, as shown in the CIP priority list, does not resolve this issue. There would be another phase of it to come down Evans and Parkview for another about $10 million that is not a prioritized project yet as well. So it's, it'd be a two-pronged project, and that's why I say it'd take about 10 years to really do the best long-term solution. There is not a Band-Aid solution that's going to work with any confidence, no.
I've got Alderman Berger, then Alderman Martin.
Paul and Jonathan, are you, like, when you get water in your basement, people do sump pumps. Is there any kind of pump or anything that can be installed in the area that can pump this water away? And, I mean, I'm just thinking, you know, if we have a long-term solution, and we can't do something for five or 10 years to make it complete, to really address the issue the way it needs to be addressed, so temporarily, what kind of, I mean, let's think outside the box here. What kind of solution can come in and can we, can we put in place that would pump this water out?
Yeah, you're talking about putting in a temporary pump station in the Adams Street area. It'd be a large wet well, had to be redundant pumps, and we'd have to pump it down Lewisburg Pike, and through the property owner's yards, and directly over to the river and under the railroad tracks. So it'd still be a substantially large project, and would still cost a lot of money to do a pump station. And you're, it's not the best ideal long-term solution, but it could be done quicker, possibly. It's just a lot of money to throw at the problem. And it's, pump stations are always a temporary fix.
Okay, next.
But it is an option that we can explore.
Explain to me one more time, and, you know, I'm trying to listen here, but the, when the water collects there, it is not properly being drained to a sewer?
It goes into a storm system.
And, yeah.
Storm system now is just surcharging. It's over, it can't take the water.
It just can't take it.
It just cannot take the water.
But even when it's standing, it still doesn't drain into it after it's settled down?
It does after a while. It will eventually, it has always drained down after time. Now, there may be a few small spots where ditches may need regraded slightly, and Streets has definitely tried to address those over the time, and helped with some of that regrading and cleaning of ditches over time. But, yeah, it always drains down over time.
Is there a way to trench or cut into, make a trench, a better trench, that the water can then drain through?
We looked at putting in a detention system out there to see if it could possibly be done, and our consultant looked at it, and he kind of laughed at it and said, there's not enough real estate, even close to enough real estate, to make even the slightest impact on these larger storm events.
Is there any real estate available to purchase there? Like a, across the street, commercial?
There are two lots, two lot, or two what could be lots, I don't know if they're actually independent lots, that you could use, but they're not, not even close to being big enough to impact the bigger storm events. You'd be talking about some of the smaller storm events. And...
Find a biblical event and a regular...
Yeah, what, what bigger storm events?
Biblical, not a technical term.
Yeah, no.
We're, we're, like, every time it rains.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So the larger, the large, go ahead.
This is a conversation.
So the larger events would be more significant, is what you're saying, but the everyday, week-by-week, month-by-month, events that we have that are just heavy rain, but not significant?
Yeah, we'd have to revisit that study to see what type of impact that it has, if it was documented in the study. I just knew it wasn't a great long-term solution. So we'd have to go back to the latest study that we did and see if any of that information was documented. If it's not, then it'll take another study to really figure that out.
Okay, so my last question is, could we reevaluate the area there to see what properties would have to be purchased, how much could be purchased, what we could do for a retention or detention area?
Yeah, the only benefit I see is looking at what available real estate is there, if you could put in some type of system to handle the smaller storm events. We could definitely look at that. I think anything outside of that, we've already studied it four times, and it comes back with the same results each time, put in a bigger pipe to the river. So I don't think we're going to find anything different, but we can look at the pond area.
Alderman Martin.
This is, this is a subject that has been on the table for years, and I have spent a lot of time on it. I'm very concerned about the neighborhood. This week, I called Dan Clatt and asked him how he got those lots approved. And he said that he worked it out with engineering, that they all had rain gardens in the front. Mr. Baker's does not have a rain garden. I don't know how that got passed, I don't know. But the others have rain gardens. And that's how they took care of that drainage in those particular lots, according to Dan Clatt. Now, there is a, in Reed's back lot, there is, there is a vacant lot. I don't, I don't know if Reed owns that or not, but anyway, is there a way that a big rain garden could be put in that, on that lot, next to Mr. Baker?
Again, we'd have to do this...
Is that not, wouldn't be big enough to hold it?
It might help for smaller events, very small events.
All right.
And the rain gardens that were installed, were installed to handle their own site drainage.
Okay.
It absolutely will not benefit or help the 30 acres that flows through that area.
Okay, this is definitely an engineering problem. But I did want to report, now that all the residents are here, Mr. Baker talked about all of the stuff that comes down into his yard and into that lot after a rain. Well, a lot of that is the gravel from Carter's Court. Now, we've been working on that with engineering and Streets for weeks, and my report today is this. May I read this letter?
Sure, please.
Good morning, Fernando. I just left you a voicemail, but wanted to follow up with an email. Our last conversation ended with you stating that you had satisfactorily removed as much of the loose gravel in the parking lot that you reasonably could, after visiting the site with another person. And I both believe there is still gravel material that can be removed. Do you all know what I'm talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
Everybody knows that washes down from Carter's Court. Gravel and everything else. And Streets goes out there and cleans those, those ditches regularly, and they fill right back up. He suggests, he said, "At this point, we can present you with two options. You can hire a sweeper truck from a company such as Midten Erosion and Sediment Control or similar, and have them finish removing all the loose gravel material in the drive aisles." The second option is, we can agree to disagree on the extent of the gravel material left on-site, and you cannot address the issue any further. If this option is chosen, then the city can come in and clean out the ditch downstream of your parking, of your parking lot one more time. And then we will document the condition of the ditch at this point. And any further discharge will create a notice of violation. And that means the city can go in and take care of it.
Correct.
Please respond and let me know which option you choose by tomorrow, Wednesday, July 3rd, at 5:00 p.m. So that's what I like to hear, a deadline. And this man has it. Now, this isn't going to take care of all the water, but it might take care of some of your mess, Mr. Baker, that washes down from Parkview. And, and that does come down. It comes right down. I've been over in that lot, and I've seen it myself. So I would, I hope that we're working on it. I don't know what we can do about the water. I don't, I just have to leave that up to engineering. I'm not an engineer. But if we can get the mess cleaned out, that might help. And it, it's coming right down through those ditches on Parkview.
Okay, I've got Alderman Peterson, then Alderman Bransford, and I do want to try to move on, because we have a lot of things to cover besides one project tonight.
This could take a month, just to talk about.
And I think that you're getting a lot of information that you're going to need to assimilate, so if you'll make your comments, fair to brief.
Yes, thank you. It seemed to me that whenever we were talking about reworking Columbia Avenue, there was some discussion about trying to do something to improve, I'm going to say improve the drainage, but improve the water flow in that area. Maybe nobody here was, was probably, was here at that time, but I do remember that there was some discussion whenever we reworked Columbia Avenue in that, in that area, about trying to do something for, for the water problem.
So going down Columbia Avenue towards Sharp's Branch is another option. It's not what we would consider to be a good or viable option from the standpoint that most of the water and sewer along that area has been upgraded and replaced, and was targeted as part of an I&amp;I project that Mark Yilti and the Water Management Team was pushing forward. And the, we put in two large pipes across Columbia to keep our options open at the time, because we didn't know how to best address Parkview, and they were very, very shallow. They were so shallow, we had to steel plate the structures versus putting on normal castings on top of them, or normal lids on top of your catch basins. So it's extremely shallow, and again, we would be taking it all the way towards Sharp's Branch, and anything in that drainage way, or drainage ditch would also need to be upgraded as well, and very disruptive. But we did look at that. I don't know that that's a feasible solution at this time in comparison.
I just remember there being some problems then. And I would have to say, last Thursday, whenever it started raining really hard, I was at a meeting here, but whenever I left, I did drive by to look and see, you know, whether the, just the downpour for an hour had done.
Alderman Bransford.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment about, you know, there's some of you all who's been long-term residents in the area, and you have actually rode the waves, literally. But I'm concerned about disclosure for the new people who've moved into the area. Is there any disclosure from the realtors, from neighbors, or someone? I know if I was buying into that street, that's Evans, 1005 Evans, were you told anything about water? So I just want to put that on there.
I'm going to interrupt you.
Yeah, yeah.
This is a discussion between the Board, and we're not discussing with them. You're welcome to have that conversation afterwards.
Okay, well, okay. I just want to put that on the table.
I'm not sure that's appropriate. We're looking at engineering options, not legal options.
Well, I just want to make sure that we are, we know where our issues are, and we need to be very clear that people know that there are issues there prior to investments. That's my comment. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to allow Mr. Stuckey for some comments, and then we're going to start at the top of our work session and try to move on.
And I appreciate folks coming out today, and this is something we've been looking at and trying to work through. As Paul referenced, there's been multiple studies over many years, looking at how this could be addressed. It does not appear there's a quick and easy solution, but we do want to go through that. And I would suggest we bring maybe a more specific summary of what some of those findings were from previous studies to help you understand it. We're talking about it today, but it might help for us to physically show you what we're talking about, and what maybe these shorter-term detention or pumping options, you know, what some of those limitations are, and how costly those might be, and how those work or don't work from an engineering perspective. We have incorporated in your discussion today, in the category that we call opportunities, which we've identified as either community needs, or things that have other funding opportunities, et cetera, that go with them. In this case, it's a community... you know, what some of those limitations are and how costly those might be and, and how those work or don't work from an engineering perspective. We have incorporated in your discussion today in the category that we call opportunities, which, which we've identified as either community needs or things that have other funding opportunities, et cetera, that go with them. In this case, it's a community need category. The, the, the first component, as Paul described it, which is improvements along Church Street. That is not just a stormwater improvement. There are water and sewer infrastructure needs that, that need to be addressed with aging infrastructure there. And the thought would be, we would do a large-scale upgrade of infrastructure along that whole street, including much larger storm sewer conveyance capability. And then from there, you could connect the Evans and Parkview area into that larger receiving line and then take it to the river. Again, it's, that seems to be the best from an engineering standpoint, but we also know that there is a sense of urgency around timing. And we'll try to give you a better, more detailed summary of what we know and what those options look like. And, and I, I want to huddle with Paul and Jonathan and others to see when that timing is. But we'll try to do that as, as soon as we can reasonably give you a, a good, complete view of all this and the, and the neighbors as well. And as you're talking about this, we, we've reserved what we think is the biggest first step in here in terms of a potential. And, and the, all the items we're going to talk to you about today do have a path to be funded and, and supported. That's the good news, but the timing isn't what everybody would like. And, and, and when we look at that, we look at how the pieces come together and are there other options that bring some benefit that could be done in the meantime? So that'll be what we try to give you a sense of. As Paul kind of indicated, there isn't a quick and easy. There isn't a, a one that really checks all the boxes. But there may be some that check enough boxes that we're worth, that may be worth working through further. Short of the ideal, which we may still work on the, the more ideal solution, but look at what could be done in between and give you a more complete understanding of what we know. And if we need to study some things further, we could, we could go down that path as well.
So we'll look forward to having that back at another work session.
And we'll let folks know in the neighborhood. We'll try to do it as quickly as we can, but I want to make sure we can do it effectively too and not just have the same discussion again.
And we'll make sure we have adequate time. So, okay, so who's going to kick it off? Michael Walters Young, or you want to start, Mr. Stuckey?
Just real quick, a few comments to start us off. We, we, what we did since our last session, which was to look at, at your prioritization, was we wanted to work back from the priorities you identified. Also identify the projects that previously been approved and what the path is forward for those projects. And then also, as we said, look at other projects that have what we call a, a important opportunity, whether it's a community need, whether it's a grant or private funding partnership that has a window of opportunity associated with it and bring those to you as well. So it'd be a blending of, of your priorities and other needs that, needs and opportunities that have been identified. All this done in the context of our financial capacity and really a preliminary funding plan for every project and how that rolls together in a collective funding strategy for your capital investments over the next 10-year window. So that's what this team has worked on over the last several weeks. And, and Michael has taken the lead of that, especially from a financial modeling standpoint. And we'll have him kick that off and then I'll jump in and some of the others will jump in as we get deeper into the presentation. So take it away.
Good afternoon and happy Fourth, everybody. As Eric said, we will start.
Depends on where you're.
Those, those, those ungrateful colonials re-boarded the boats and went home to England. Did not stay here. We'll review the available resources and revenues and we'll do a particular dive, at least at a, a, a high level in terms of our debt capacity review. And then I'll turn it back over to Eric to summarize expenses and then the rest of our team going through our project tiers, of which there are three that we've identified. And then closing, I'll come back and explain to you what we propose as your 2020 capital budget. You have at your places three handouts. You have the PowerPoint presentation. You have a one-page summary of the 2020 capital budget, which is exactly what is on Granicus, except for this front colorful page, which we ginned up today. But the list is exactly what's on Granicus. And then you have the 56-page detailed financing model, each tier, the funding sources, et cetera. So as a quick review, this financing model for the last several years has been built to determine the following questions. What is the amount of resources we have to spend on capital? How much will the project plan cost? And what will the impact be on our overall debt service and our debt capacity? The large document, that 56-page document has three main sections. First, it has an executive summary, which is essentially what we're going to cover today, with current and future resource estimates, annual estimates of how much we will spend per year on CIP projects, and a revised debt capacity analysis. The 10-year financing analysis for each of the major sources. So general fund cash, road impact fees, parkland dedication fees, facilities taxes, et cetera. And then individual project sheets that detail where the funding will come from for each of the recommended 37 projects in the fiscal 2019 through 2028 capital investment program. So as we've done in the past, we have two ways of slicing this model. The first is we want to present to you the available resources in a purely cash perspective. Taking into account all available fund balances, over the next 10 years, we forecast that slightly more than $179 million will be available in cash for projects between now and the end of fiscal 2028. This is a healthy forecast growth from where we were in November. This is about $15 million higher. And the result of that is the fact that you've had continued growth in your sales tax. Keep in mind that one of the key additional components of revenue that will fund this future is when the sales tax, which is currently being collected and given to Williamson County, comes back to you at the end of fiscal 2021, the beginning of fiscal 2022. For our programming purposes, we have forecast to split that half to operations and half to capital. We had estimated that being around $6 million a year. And at the end of the first 12 months, Christine, I believe that was?
Over seven.
Over $7 million a year. So we've taken that into account with actual collections today. Even though you won't start seeing it for these purposes for another two full years, we feel that that's appropriate to increase our revenue assumptions moving forward.
So three years is 21 million?
Three years, it would be between $21, $22 million if current collections continue. The pie chart on the screen shows you just sort of a general makeup of that $179 million. The largest share comes from the general fund. The second largest share comes from city facilities. The third largest share actually comes from Hotel Motel. And then sort of onward and downward from there. Again, the general fund cash amount includes anything that is over 45% of general fund fund balance, which as per your policies is free and clear and available to spend on capital projects. The 50% or one-half of the sales tax amounts, which as I mentioned, are currently going to Williamson County, and 50% of the TIF district. We still forecast that to come due or come back to the general fund in fiscal '24. And we're dedicating again, half of that to capital and half to future operations. Now, we can leverage more of the cash though, if we do it half or part in debt and part in cash. We are proposing an additional $95 million of bond issuances in fiscal '21, '23, '25, and '27 to join the existing $37 million in debt, which we've issued already, between the fiscal 2017 and fiscal 2019 bond issuances. You will note, those bond issuances were actually for larger amounts. But that $37 million is the net amount that is going towards this particular plan and the projects in this particular plan. A few notes and reminders. We are taking into account all debt that we have. So all debt that is rolling off, as well as any additional debt which we've just added on in 2019. We continue to assume that we will issue bonds over 20 years at 4.5% interest rates. The analysis is predicated on taking the monies that are coming back to us in 2022 and 2024 from the sales tax and TIF district respectively. And we attempted, keep in mind, we attempted as a guiding rule that the, that the funding plan would be balanced half in debt and half in cash. We didn't quite meet that target and I'll show you that in a minute. Please.
Whenever it says the debt capacity analysis assumes issuing bonds in level principal payments? So that means we're paying the same amount in principal?
It's actually level debt. It's actually level debt service. There's a, it's not, it's not level principal, it's level debt service.
Thank you.
That would be incredibly concerning.
Exactly, wouldn't it, wouldn't it? Thank you.
So there's not, the, the bottom line is that means we're not doing some structuring where we backload. It's, it's consistent debt service over a 20-year, sort of like your standard mortgage payment. And so it's a little more straightforward in that way.
So the charts on the screen show you what the impact would be. We would propose funding three larger truncheons of debt in '21, '23, and '25 of $31 million, nearly $27 and $27 million respectively, to fund a variety of capital projects. And then a smaller amount of $10 million in 2027. We would, once we get to 2027, we would of course look at that. That is to fund the balance of the projects which are listed here before you today. The chart below shows, the blue bars show existing debt service. Taking into account the most recent bond issuance we've made, the 2019 bond issuance, the green bars show the additional debt service as proposed to fund the balance of these projects. The blue is existing. You are already locked into paying everything that is in blue on an annual basis. So this year's debt service for the debt service fund, which is funded through the general fund, the Hotel Motel Fund, the Road Impact Fund and Sanitation, totals just under $15.5 million. Anything additional would be the, what's shaded in green. To summarize your revenues at a very high level, we're forecasting just under $302 million of available resources between cash and debt to fund this proposed capital investment program. We didn't meet our 50% target. We're actually 56% cash and 44% debt. There are some key differences about what changed from November to today. And then that's highlighted on this slide. The increase of $65 million is accounted for in the fact that we didn't include any of the external sources of revenue. So whether that be grants, that would include things such as the money for McEwen Phase Four, grants from TDOT for various trails, the money from Franklin Special Schools for the Ballfields Project, which you've recently reviewed, and/or private fundraising components. So for example, and that would be the home raising project. Majority federal funds, small amount from the city, the balance comes from the homeowners. That's all part of that $30 million in external funding. There's an additional $16 million in forecast development funds due to the continued high rate of collections that we have cash in hand. So road impact, city facilities, hotel motel, et cetera. We did not factor in any of the water and sewer supporting components in November. And that totals $12 million for these projects. And we are forecasting issuing $7 million in additional debt compared to what we did in November. Takeaway, about $302 million worth of available resources, we believe, for this plan for the next 10 fiscal years. $302 million. And with.
Of capacity for the next 10 years. You have a question?
I'm sorry, I'm writing.
So with the new numbers, you're saying if we were trying to meet a 50-50, we could probably have some additional debt to match the cash, maybe a little more leverage potentially?
Yes. This is where this exercise and, and the caveat needs to be thrown out there. We worked very hard to try to figure out how to leverage every available funding source in a sequential manner for when we would get the money. You'll note, one of the charts in your detailed packet shows, over the course of 10 years, you can have $300 on million worth of available resources. But the cash comes in at about $13 to $15 million every year. So we can't spend cash that we'll collect in 2027 earlier to pay debt service that you would incur in, in 2024. We will continue to look at this absolutely every year. And if we think we can accommodate more debt service or find additional funding sources to help subsidize some of that debt service, then we will certainly look at doing that. But that's, that's why this is, that's why this kind of has shaken out at this point because it's about the limits of what we can afford to service.
Two, two comments on that. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention too, that some of the, much of the cash that we pulled into the, or some of the cash that we pulled into this can't be used to pay debt service. So we're adding cash such as state grant money that we can't pay debt service with. So especially, you know, for example, the $10 million from the state on McEwen, that, that has to go to construction. It can't go to, to pay for debt service. So while we did update our estimates on sales taxes and property taxes, that, that can be tweaked to some aspect on paying debt. But we certainly, as we pull in these external sources, those monies can't go to, to repaying debt service.
Yeah, so that, that 302 is a mix of all of those. Two things, and certainly we can look at our debt structure and, and amount. But I will always remind you that when you add debt, you add a debt service obligation to the general fund, which has implications for our ongoing service delivery and other things. So there's trade-offs there. Yeah, so you just, you just need to, there's a trade-off there and that is something for us to always look at. That's part of what we factored into the equation that we've given you today. The other factor is we've been relatively conservative on those development fees, things like road impact and, and parkland and, you know, those may do better. We've kind of used what we've gotten and been pretty limited in how far we've projected out, especially out years we're not counting on a huge influx. There may be, but those are ones you want to be a little more cautious on. So there's probably capacity out there and especially in the back half of the, of the 10-year plan. But we just aren't comfortable projecting it yet. And as we get closer to that, we'll probably have some capacity that we don't plan on today. But, but you can reasonably expect it if you look at our general patterns in those areas.
Well, we're probably being very conservative right now. If we went to the market right now, we'd get much better than 4.5%. But we have no idea where the debt's going to be in 2, 4, 6, 8, yeah.
Yeah, Christine, what did we get in the 19?
It was, it was actually just right under 3%. We were at 2.8. So some of that is just the exercise of, of the forecasting. Is that 4 to 4.5 is, is a planning purposes? And then we certainly do, do the best we can, whatever market we, whatever market we go out there to issue bonds in. But, but that, that certainly is a conservative for a long period of time.
Alderman Barnhill, you got a comment?
Just a brief one, and I smile when I see this. There's also no property tax increase in there either.
There is not, correct.
For 10 years.
That's right.
That's correct. That's my comment.
Your observation.
I'm perfecting your sentence by the way.
I was just going to tell you to turn your microphone off. Continue.
One, one very brief one. You know, we are hoping that everything will continue as it can, as it is now. However, some of us have been around whenever the bottom dropped out. And I can remember someone who worked for the city said, "Well, they're spending money like they think it grows on trees." And boy, then we found out, you know, you also have to be careful about contingencies because sometimes they don't always progress as we're expecting.
And that's why we would be reviewing it on a regular basis.
Exactly, exactly. Thank you.
Continue.
Do you want me to jump in? So I'm going to take this next section and talk about the project and expenditure side of this equation. We are going to present to you three different groups of projects. Three, we'd put them in three classifications. One is the 2017 tier or the previously approved projects that are now moving into next phases. Many of them starting to move towards construction, some of which you've already completed. But the, in terms of the money that we will need, it's all the new, the newer projects, the projects that are moving towards construction. The group of projects that were identified by you all and your prioritization, you may remember we melded a group together of the top 10 of, of what we called non-weighted and the top 10 of weighted and we put them together and we had around 15 projects. That's.
That's, in our opinion, down to about 13, and we'll, we'll talk about that. And then there's this group that we have generally called opportunity. It's either a need we've identified in the community. It is a highly ranked, from the staff rating that came forward, it had a majority of board support, but may not have made that top 10 cut, but, so it's some combination, and some of them check almost all of those boxes, that we thought need to be brought forward to you to consider as well because of, again, those needs, those opportunities, the opportunity to leverage other dollars, be they grant or private partnerships. And so that's what we'll walk through. Let's go to the next slide, kind of shows you in dollars what that looks like. The existing previously approved group, what we're calling the 2017 tier, has about 107.5 million dollars coming in terms of completing those projects. So that's 38% of, of this total number of 281 million. The, the group that's called the 2019 tier, that's essentially your priority tier. That's just over 108, almost 108.7 million. Again, 39% of, of that total funding. And then there's those 17 projects that were identified as oppor, in that opportunity category, opportunity slash need category, and that's about 65 million dollars. So that gives you a global picture of what those look like. Let's look at the 2017, just refresh everybody's memory. I won't go through the projects in great detail, but again, you see these seven projects that will have funding needs going forward in the next 10-year window. I do want to remind everybody that we've already spent a significant amount of capacity on projects we've already completed. The completion of Hillsborough Road, the sidewalk project along Murphysboro Road, 96 East Highway, the radio system, the public safety radio system, the major street resurfacing that we're doing, things like Cool Springs and Liberty Pike and those areas that we've done, major local roads that we've resurfaced in the last couple of years and will continue over the couple of years to come. We've got the sidewalk gap work that we've done. Those are all things that you've already addressed that aren't reflected on here because you've already spent that, spent some of that money towards those projects.
Aaron, one of these looks new to me, sanitation facility?
Yeah, that is.
That's like.
You may have seen that referred to as the Century Court project. That's the existing sanitation operation. We'd identified that earlier, that we've got facility improvements that need to happen out there with water drainage and some facility paving issues and the road maintenance out there that needs to be addressed. So that was.
That was, it just like, I don't.
Yeah, that, that was previously approved. I think we may have called it Century Court improvements, but.
I was like, wait a minute, I've never seen it before.
Municipal complex improvements.
Complex might have been a term used, but it is funded largely through the sanitation fund itself. Yeah, so they've just, the age of that facility and some things are showing that need to be addressed. So that is going to be a, a portion of that's addressed in the 2017 bond sale. And the second piece of that is part of the 2019 bond sale.
It wasn't, it was all bond funded from the 17 bonds and then the 19 bonds that we issued this year. So that actually.
Because they're working towards being an enterprise.
That's part of them supporting their own way.
They do, sanitation fund does pay that debt service.
Thank you, sorry.
No problem. So again, you see Fire Station 7, which is underway, McEwen 4, which we are working through, hopefully bidding that a year from now. Franklin Road, which will bid later this year. You've got the major road resurfacing, which we've done annually since we started the Invest Franklin program, but that reflects what's needed going forward. The sanitation facility or Century Court facility we just talked about. And then Southeast Park, we discussed that previously in terms of that first phase, which is both the infrastructure and the initial components of that project. And then the 96 West Multi-Use Trail. That's the project that we'll, we'll bid this year as well that connects from the area around Freedom Middle School and Poplar Grove all the way into downtown. So that's the seven projects that remain to be completed from your previous approval group, that the 2017 tier, that we will, we are continuing to move forward on and that will have financial impact as you look at your, your financial model here. Let's go to the next one. This is, this is the combination group that we looked at last time that was your top 10 list. And we looked at it both a straight vote, whatever projects had the most votes from the board. We called that the non-weighted category. And then we had another group that was the weighted category so that if you rated it first, it got 25 points. If you rated it 25th, it got one point, all the way between those two. And so when we blended the top 10 of those two lists together, we had 15 projects. There are 13 on that list. There are two that we would like to say, let's, let's put a hold on for right now. And I'll touch on those, and Paul and Jonathan may want to weigh in further. One of those had been improvements to Franklin Road and Mallory Station. What we would recommend is that we kind of put a pin in that project while we see how the improvements that are just getting implemented now with the turn lane and the signal changes there, take, take hold. There also might be a sense that if there's some Franklin Road improvements, there might be some further benefit that T-Dot might pay for. So, you know, we might come back to this project, but let's, let's see how it functions. And if it, if it, if the improvement is good, at least good for the near term or midterm, then we can revisit it then. So guys, anything else to add on that one? Okay, they coached me well.
Go ahead, Alderman Burger.
Just want to make that clear to anybody listening, that that does not include the current turn lane they're putting in.
Yeah, this is, this is beyond that, yes.
Yes, I just want to make that clear, that anybody listening to this meeting, that does not include that turn lanes being putting in, being put in now by Embry.
Yes.
They're putting that turn lane, if you're going north on Franklin Road, it's a right-hand turn lane onto Mallory Station.
Do we have an estimate when that will activate? Do you guys know?
I don't know, we don't.
It's, it's not that far off, but it's.
Prior to occupancy, so. They're motivated to get it done because it's prior to.
They're working on it now.
Right.
But, but it's also, it also includes the traffic signal though at Legends Lane too. And, and there's a small.
Yes.
There's a small turn lane there, not, not that it would affect that many people because I think the one, you know, to Mallory Station is really going to affect a lot of people and that's going to be good.
And you've improved that signal too at the Mallory Station.
But they have, but, but Embry has done all of that, right?
Correct, some of it's been paid with your impact fees though.
Yeah, I see what you mean. They've used the impact fees that they would have normally paid in to do it, thank you.
Then the second project that had been identified was Crowthers Widening. And what had been described in the prioritization was Long Lane to Falcon Creek, which is about a 12 million dollar project. As engineering staff looks at that, our opinion is that really working north to south will be a more effective way to improve that roadway. And that's, that's a much, that's a bigger project. And, and not that we won't continue to look at that as a priority, but that might, you might want to hold off on that element while we look at how to better implement a north to south solution. Guys, you may want to. It would be, this would be largely the widening.
Yeah, if you're going to widen Crowthers Parkway, you should really start from the interchange and work your way back up into Lad Park or vice versa, Goose Creek Extension ever happens, start working your way up from that interchange to the south versus widening the intersection and it all come into a trajectory.
And I think extension would largely be driven by development.
Correct.
I think we'd rather see that happen from a development standpoint than something you put city, direct city resources in at this point.
Go ahead, Alderman Burger.
So the, excuse me, Falcon Creek to Highway 96, that section, you've got that in here too. So is that?
That, that's the one, that's one that had been on the priority list that we said, let's hold off on that project.
Just that one, that smaller portion.
Because it makes more, yeah, it wouldn't make sense to just do that without working north to south to make the road work better.
Said Long Lane to Falcon Creek, but then it says Falcon Creek to Highway 96.
Kind of the same principle as Stormwater. Start at the river and work back.
So just click back real quick. So with those modifications, this list of the 2019 tier is your, your top prioritization in a priority order based on, on the, the voting we saw from you or prioritization we saw from the board. So we would propose that be entirely included in your updated capital plan as, as the board's 2019 tier. And so from there, we would suggest adding to that tier a group of 17 other smaller projects, but we think important. And I will ask for some help from Lisa and Paul and Jonathan as we walk through these. I'm going to give you just a very quick blurb on what they are because you probably haven't spent as much time as these, with these as you did with the original priorities. Liberty Park is essentially some, some base additional improvements and amenities for additional build-out phase of Liberty, sort of updating that master plan and adding some additional pavilions, tennis courts, pickleball courts, mountain biking trails to tie into the network we're building out there, public restrooms, additional parking areas, multi-use field that, lighted field that could be used for events and athletics as well. So this would, and this has the potential to use a significant chunk of parkland funds that have been dedicated in that quadrant. So that really brings that up. Also, facilities tax funds could be used there too. So when you look at really all of the parks projects in this updated plan, there's probably hardly any general fund dollars in it. We're using parkland, we're using facilities, we're using hotel motel to do virtually all of your park, your park investments in the 10-year window. And that's a, a great thing that we have that kind of capacity from those sources because there's some pretty significant parks investments there. Lisa, you want to add anything to that? Is that covered? Okay, thank you.
May I add something?
Yeah.
And I know this isn't in this at all, but we're going to lose a huge opportunity someday, soon probably, to really tie our park in at Liberty to the intersection of McEwen, Cool Springs, Oxford Glen, and the new trails, trail or new multi-use trail going down the new section of McEwen. Because that, Mr. Lancaster's property is on the corner. And I know he's tried to sell it and then he didn't sell it, and then he was going to sell it again, didn't sell it. We really need that chunk of land on that corner. That ties right into our park. It makes total sense if you look at the overall plan for that park to tie into that, and then it ties right into the multi-use trail that goes down McEwen, ties right into that. And we're always talking about connectivity, but also that park is sitting right there. And then we have a chunk of right-of-way that used to be McEwen Drive that belongs to the city, that we already own, right in front of the Lancaster's. So I, I would, I don't know. I know money doesn't grow on trees, but I, I'm going to tell you, we, we need to take a good, solid look at that and, and try to do something about it.
We have in the past, so that you know, and I think you do, we have in the past to take a look at purchasing that piece of property. But as development were to walk through the door, then that becomes part of the parkland. It becomes part of those improvements that we work out to make sure connections do take place. Just the same as we're doing with Avalon, any of those that are taking place across the street and as we've had in the past. So for that corner, we agree with you. But that will be an important corner, whether it's, should be parkland or should be a private development. But when it does come through as a development plan, we'll make sure those are tied in to the park as well as to the multipurpose trail system or sidewalk system.
And, and if, and I, I just want to, I won't take just another minute. Because this is tied into that, if development does come to that corner, we, we have that right-of-way with the old McEwen was, we can't lose that. We need to make sure that's all tied in because this is going to be critical. And we're going to get more money from Avalon coming in there. And as we talked, Liberty's been neglected for a while and it's, you know, got some issues over there and we really need, and that, not the ballpark area, but the other area.
Yes, and this is the area that we're speaking of today is what we always considered what was Phase Two. The original went in around 2003. We opened it up with a ballpark, so the Phase Two that needs completion of the 2008 master plan, we would go back, revisit that, but this is part of, this is that section. So thank you so much.
I'm going to go through these pretty quick, just to give you a quick summary. But the, the main barn at Harlinsdale involves exterior and interior restoration, addition of public restrooms, both putting in, restoring the stalls, the office areas so it can both be used for equestrian events and for other, other event usage. Even restoring and providing a warming kitchen there, other elements that make that work. There is the opportunity to leverage, there's some state money available to help us. There is fundraising that Friends of Franklin Parks has already done that could assist in this restoration as well. So there is an opportunity to work off of some, some other funding opportunities here and get the barn to a point where it can be more fully and regularly utilized. The Eastern Flank Road is essentially, we need to repave that circular road. If you've been out there recently, you see it's not in great shape. Essentially, parks would work with streets to get this resurfaced. It would be something we would do in fiscal year 20, if you put that in your plan.
Question?
Yes.
Are we disappointed in the condition and deterioration of that road?
Yes, that.
May I say, whenever we started to build it, I said, don't do that on it.
There is a.
We have a driveway like that.
The road that's there now was the DBST that T-Dot approved and went through that process. What we went back several years ago at Harlinsdale, we originally put that same in when we originally did the, the main road there. We went back with a West Tennessee mix, and that is what is down at Harlinsdale today. The question will be, this is not in the historic district, it is a historic park, is, should we go back with asphalt? And there is asphalt in the parking areas at Eastern Flank Facility. You must go back, the reason West Tennessee mix was used because it looks more brown and therefore it, when it discolors, it looks like more of a, well, it is a gravel road today, but no pun intended, we don't mean for it to be that. It just need to look like that. But that will be some of the questions, but we'd like to just finish this project. We do have, yes, we're disappointed in the existing, but we need to resurface it. It has too many, the tourism at this site is, but.
I agree, it needs to be resurfaced. I don't want to make the same mistakes again.
And I, I think that's if, if the board's willing and, and we are, most likely we would recommend that we would look at more of a roadway type roadway surfacing, whether that's asphalt, but we'll take a look at that.
There's heavy enough usage out there that I think it warrants a more substantial roadway. We learned some lessons on Harlinsdale. This was originally funded with a, a T-Dot grant and there was a sensitivity around how it looked. From a historic context standpoint, we think we know more now in terms of what we really need and can do a better job this time around.
There's a reason we don't build roads like that anymore.
That's right.
And it's showing, that's why we don't build roads like that anymore.
And the other thing, at that time, we were looking how we could do the projects and, because we didn't have, because the cost was significant to, to build a railroad, so. Which, which now we're going to build it and sometimes better just do it right the first time.
What we're putting on top of it. The, the Greenway project here is really just a half mile of trail that will connect Aspen Grove Park to the trailhead, trail system along Mack Hatcher. So it's sort of a missing link project. So that could be a, a, an important connection there. McEwen Drive Interchange, we've talked about that. That's providing for the two left turns into that, that on-ramp onto I-65 South. Yes.
I just want to reiterate why that is so important because we have Franklin Park there and also we have additional development happening across the street on McEwen at Crowthers that we just approved. We've got condos coming, we have hotel coming, we have office coming, we have retail coming. And we can't get the people out of Franklin Park today. At five o'clock, four, four o'clock, let's put four o'clock, four thirty, five o'clock, five thirty. We have a really big problem over there.
And, and this capacity could be added within the next year. So this is, this is pretty much ready to go.
And I will tell you, I constantly get calls, especially from Schneider Electric.
This, the, the next item is the Church Street element that we talked about before. This has a little bit of, of design money in it, but this would be the. This has a little bit of design money in it, but this would be the part that would add existing or additional stormwater capacity along Church Street, and then ultimately would have a second phase that could address some of the problems we talked about earlier. So we already addressed that. Yes, but you'll get good use of it before we do this project. By the time we were able to execute this project, you'll, and we got some compliments on the realignment of that road, too, so. The next two items really go together. They are improvements on Paytonsville Road, Pratt Lane and the Pratt Lane Bridge, as we have Berry Farms become more active and more demands out there, things like the Ramsey headquarters and the Aetna headquarters out there, that enhancing those roadways. The bridge upgrade was actually part of our commitment to the Ramsey development in that package, so we really have a commitment there that we need to do at some point. And so this would move those two elements forward and be consistent with the needs in a growing area, but also some commitments that we'd made previously. The home raising, this is the full cost. You've already really approved that, we're paying half of the remaining half, so it's really seventeen and a half percent. Residents pay seventeen and a half percent, the federal partnership through the Army Corps pays sixty-five percent. That's the full in, ours is seven hundred thousand, I think is the number, is the city commitment.
Seven hundred.
Seven hundred thousand is the city commitment. The West Main Bridge widening, this provides that pedestrian area along the bridge on West Main that had been eliminated when that bridge was replaced by TDOT, so this would help address that. That's been something we've talked about. Carlisle Lane improvements, this would realign that road, make it function better, add, just make it work better in terms of connecting between Ninety-Six West and Del Rio. Also, other consideration, Williamson County has purchased land out there and is likely to begin building a new animal control center out there in the next year, two years, I think you can see that happening. So that will also create a little more traffic, there's a lot of traffic there already, so.
No, I know that, but where is it on, well, we don't have our picture of.
Franklin Christian School.
Okay, so it'd be on, it'd be on Carlisle then?
Old Charlotte, it's on Old Charlotte, yeah, across, kind of close to the school on the north side, I think, right?
Next to the high-tension power lines.
The next one on our list is Thompson Alley, that's a neighborhood park, we've done in-house, kind of done the design for that, and would need just a little bit of additional help to get the design ready, and then we'd be able to build that probably a year from now. The Main Street Sidewalk Replacement Project, this is really going through the downtown streetscape area and really going block by block over the next four to five years and improving it, replacing sidewalk, looking at the tree wells, just refreshing it, because it's, that infrastructure's aging, and we have some things that we need to improve. So that...
Might eliminate some lawsuits.
Well, we would, we would improve that, and that would, I think that would help that whole area both look and function better. The Mack Hatcher multi-use trail, this is another connection piece. Lisa, you want to describe that one? Yeah, I'm sorry, didn't have that one. Yes.
It's, basically, once Mack Hatcher's done, it'll connect from Hillsborough Road over towards Franklin Road, it'll be the missing gap in Mack Hatcher, and that's one we talked about. Trying to get the design done, it'd be a great opportunity then to go after federal funding for the construction of it. It's a no-brainer project for the feds to try to fund, or TDOT to support that project.
So really, this would be, we'd want to do some maybe preliminary design work to be ready to go for some grants, that we have funding in here, but we might be able to leverage some grant opportunities.
Can I ask a question, since we're talking about Mack Hatcher and a trail? I know that the four-laning of Mack Hatcher Southeast is now on the state list somewhere.
It's been, I believe the design has been funded.
They're doing some preliminary design work.
They put it in their latest three-year statewide transportation plan for preliminary engineering work, and I believe it was toward the back end of that three-year plan, when they put it towards the end of that plan.
So I'm thinking, you know, whenever you're looking at something like that, then that's something that needs to get our look also, and as I say, since it's finally in there, at least in their listing, that that might be something.
Yeah, that's, that's a state-funded project typically. When they did the Northeast, it was entirely funded by the state. You know, the extension we did now, we put a public, we put some city money to help move it along. I think part of what we look at is, you know, if it would help it for us to participate, then that's something we'd have to reexamine. Right now, we're counting on the state to improve their road. We're encouraged that it's on the three-year window for that piece, that once you get in that three-year plan, it helps move it along. So we'll keep pushing that, and I think that's something to look at again in that opportunity category, if we think, hey, if we do certain things, we might be able to move it up the list, like we did with Northwest.
Jonathan, I will make sure we're advocating for the ten-foot multipurpose trail along southeast Mack Hatcher.
Wait, I just want to get the, I want to get the four-laning done.
We want both.
But, no, I appreciate you.
We're selfish, I mean, we'll be, at our meetings, we'll be making sure that's included.
Okay, thank you.
And then the next Greenway project is the connection between Pinkerton and the Franklin Road Bridge. We want to probably follow a little bit how that bridge improvement's going to work with TDOT, but that could be a good connection there as well, and then again, help connect our parks better to existing infrastructure, or infrastructure we're going to put in with the improvements on Franklin Road as well. Anything to add on that one? And then, this is the element for structured parking downtown. We had put in an estimate of about eight-point-one million dollars. This would be to have those resources identified so that we can look at where might that fit? Where might we work to put that in place? You know, one concept is to look at how it might work with the redevelopment of City Hall in this block. Do you add additional parking to this area? Are there other areas we might be able to look at, either acquiring land or partnering with others to provide some additional structured parking in downtown? We had, in your priority list, there was the, I think we'd had the surface lot on Fifth Avenue identified as well. So we're trying to look at both, that's a short-term fix, this is a longer-term opportunity, and that's, that's why we wanted to put that in here. And again, I think you had a good number of board members, I think a majority of the board did put that on their list as well.
Mr. Mc.
Alderman.
We're talking about parking structure or surface lots. Is there any place...
Thank you, we know, Bill. All right, is there any place in here that shows a lot for the merchants to park?
So the Fifth Avenue lot that is on there, that could always be an option there, that's the lot that the city owns that is just south of French's Boots.
Right.
That's, that's one we have in there, and that's in your priority list, that could be developed. This is a general eight million dollars, that eight million dollar number is more designed to get at a structured parking, obviously, with that price tag.
And I understand that, but, but you said this is long-term, but they need a short-term, we need a short-term to address their problems, because they don't have...
Right, and the Fifth Avenue lot, that could be turned around fairly quickly relative to this. So that, that gives you some relief. I mean, it's not a huge parking lot, but it's, it's something we could do that could provide some capacity.
And we had talked about the lot, the vacant lot over next to, on Ninety-Six West.
I'd mentioned to you the Ninety-Six West lot, we've had a meeting on that, we've explored it, and had an email this, I guess it was this morning, that it's not going to work out.
Of course. Okay. Thank you.
Could I continue on that? You know, we've had so many people parking, working on Harpitz Square, and I know in some other places that I've been, they were more tourist destinations, I guess, but they had just a, you know, just an open lot, and then had, you know, some kind of a shuttle or something like that. And I thought for people, especially people that are going to be working all day downtown, it would work for them to just be shuttled, you know, into town. But, but we do have a lot of property, you know, out there in the bicentennial park area that...
Yeah, that is a component of the bicentennial project to the...
That previous lot that we talked about.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, that would help, and as I say, but now, they did, they did have a little shuttle, now, they had shuttle, you know, work all day long and everything, because there were, there were a lot of tourists there.
So bicentennial is on your priority list, you've already, I kind of went through that, because you all had identified that, but that does have a component that would help on that parking element as well.
And, and really, but, but you need to think, there also needs to be some, I want to say transit, not really transit, but you know, some kind of shuttle for people, especially if they're getting to work, and then, especially after they finish work.
Yeah, if you're asking employees to park there, you got to provide some, maybe help them get through there.
Yes, yes, that's a thought.
And we do see more and more of an employment base in downtown, that's part of the story of this. I mean, it wasn't that long ago, Second Avenue was always about half-full at the most, and now it's frequently full, as we, a lot of us see. So it is a, and that, I think that's attributed to the number of jobs that are in downtown compared to what, what we had maybe ten years ago. The last one was the Hayes Home Restoration, this is an external, exterior and interior restoration. We've got about a half-million dollars in here. This is another one that is ripe for some private funding and partnership there, so I think you putting it on the list actually helps us maybe not have to spend all the public dollars that are here, because you having it on the list might help us get some other partnerships, because you've identified it as an important project to move forward on, and Friends of Franklin Parks and others might be able to step up and partner with us in getting that done. So that's the, that's that opportunity tier that we, we talked about, and collectively, that's about two-hundred-and-seventy-three million dollars of projects collectively. And when you look at the sheet Michael gave you for just 2020, that's around forty-one million dollars of what we would need to integrate into the FY20 budget to support projects. And as is shown here, that's about twelve projects that are going into construction mode, and about nineteen projects that are in the, somewhere in the pre-construction development stage. It's preliminary or final design, or if we have to do environmental work, whatever is needed for those, to tee those up for future years' construction. So this is really just about the current fiscal year. This presentation is largely about the ten-year window of that, I think it's two-hundred-and-seventy-three, two-hundred-and-eighty-one? Okay, that's, okay, yeah. Because we've got the, one project that isn't in that list, yeah. So, yes, two-hundred-and-eighty-one.
Alderman Martin.
So we can't do all of this with what we've got?
Yes, you can, yes, you can. In fact, we showed you that you've got over three-hundred-million dollars worth of capacity, and that list is collectively two-hundred-and-eighty-one. So we've got, we've got more than that capacity identified in the modeling we've done, and this is what we, with your prioritization and the other projects we've just identified, would recommend we move forward with, in your update of your ten-year plan.
So you raised the question, that's wonderful and all, I mean, the answer, so when would we see this as a resolution before the board to go ahead and proceed with this? I mean, they'll still come back and visit with the board, the projects will.
Well, here's what I would suggest, if you're comfortable with this list, if you're comfortable with a portion of this list, let's move forward with where there's a consensus. If you want to revisit some group of these or have a little more time with them, that's fine, we don't have to do this in one motion, we can. Or if you want to say, "Let's go with this group and then come back in the fall and visit them further," you know, from a staff standpoint, we're comfortable recommending this combination of the priorities you've identified and this other group of needs slash opportunity, and we could as early as next Tuesday the night, have a resolution for you to approve. Or we can do some group that you're comfortable with, whatever the board's desire is at this stage.
Alderman Branford.
Well, I know we have Church Street here and in Columbia Avenue type thing, so based on our tonight discussion from our citizens, is, and I know you're going to...
Is that beginning of, is this beginning of it?
Okay, is that the beginning of that? Okay, I know you're going to meet with the engineers and going to come up with something, so is there any, do we need to pay any more attention to that, this line item?
You know, I think so. I mean, here's, here's what I would say, from what we know now, and this, this takes the first big chunk of that project and puts it on your plan.
Okay.
And it puts two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars of money for us to do additional study and further review. If the nature of that project changes, at least we've identified some capacity to go towards it. So that's probably going to be a little bit of a project that's going to evolve as we discuss it more. It might be exactly what Paul and engineering have described, which is a Phase One of Church Street and a Phase Two of Evans and Parkview area, or there, or if you want to look at some of these other elements, we've at least identified some capacity to do them.
Because it's not going to happen overnight, and I think taking the steps that you recommended would probably, you know, be the way to go. Thank you.
Alderman Martin, did, did you make your comment, and then I'll recognize Alderman Peterson.
That's what I wanted to know, if that Church Street was the beginning of the project to solve some problems up there next to Carl.
It is, all of the Church Street project, which is part of the Church Street, the Evans and Parkview into Church Street, into the river from a Stormview standpoint. But it's a bigger project than that, I mean, as I described, the Church Street project is water and sewer upgrades, it's a major upgrade of the storm sewer capacity. There's probably some other utility elements that we would look at in terms of how the power lines and the light poles work, because you've got light poles that are literally right in the sidewalk on the curb, right, you know, right close there. So we may look at how all of that works, and you might do sort of a streetscape light version of that area along with these other improvements, might make sense.
Since we've just done, since we've just done Church Street, you think maybe we could just swap the, swap the phases and do that Parks, Evans and Parkview, and then let it come in? I just hate to dig up that street when we just finished it last week.
Yeah. What they, they basically did a Band-Aid fix in essence, so they didn't really put a premium topping down on it, they put just enough fix to hold us for a few years to get the water lines designed and get them back in. So don't, I mean, you're not really throwing away anything, that's going to deteriorate pretty quickly anyway. So think kind of like we did on South Margin Street, that's already starting to deteriorate, very similar style to what we did there, but it's just a Band-Aid fix. And you could look at doing some sort of interim phase, but without the Church Street phase or something going down South Margin, one of those two streets, you're not going to have anywhere for that water to go. So you have to have that in.
So when streets decided to do that as resurfacing, that was the question, is when's, when's Church Street likely to happen? And basically, our answer was, the soonest it happens is probably three to four years out, and that made sense to do that relatively thin layer of asphalt to improve it, get the restriping so the parking works better, the laneage is a little wider, you get a sense of how it's going to work, but it's not a huge throwaway at all. It's going to serve well for the next few years, and then we'll be able to do this project.
If we can do this, I would be in favor of doing a resolution to go on and start.
So I have Alderman Peterson next, then Alderman Blanton.
Well, let me say, well, first of all, just on the opportunity, things we did not speak about, the home raising project, and apparently, this thing that's just come out in the last, in the last month, has indicated that they are, they, the Corps of Engineers has this hundred-page thing, or three-hundred-page thing or something, talking about that, and it looks like that that is something that they want to do right away. And, and it, I haven't read any of it much to say, but it sounds like it's something that's going to have a limited window for, for us to get involved in that. And so that really wasn't what my comment that I was going to make.
And on that project, we look at that as essentially an approved project by the board, so we're ready to move forward on that. We built it in here from a capacity standpoint at that seven-hundred thousand dollars, which is the city's commitment. So we're really assuming we're going forward with that. with that project as approved by the board.
Okay, well, it just wasn't in that list, so that's the...
It's on this list.
No, 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 it's on the opportunity list.
But we're suggesting the opportunity list be included in your approval.
Well, okay, the other thing, though, is I did not look at this as the opportunity list versus the thing that we had put our weighted projects on and everything. I didn't, I mean, I tried to look over all this and everything, but I was not thinking about it taking over some of our other weighting of projects. Now, I understand about the two that you talked about, about, that makes perfect sense and everything, but there may be some other things in here. In other words, I was not...
Well, let us know which projects you think are on there.
No, no, but see, that's what I'm saying. I can't not do that right now.
Well, I understand.
I was not looking at it, but whenever we were talking about putting it on next week's agenda and everything, that is a bit of a concern to me to...
We can put it on the work session next week, if you wanted to talk about it there.
That might be a good idea, yes, thanks.
And we could even prep a resolution, and then you can decide what you want to do from there.
But I think we do need to look at this in terms of what we had already described as important projects. Not that I necessarily agreed with all of them, and they certainly did not agree with me perfectly and everything.
And you all need to take time to do that.
Yeah, and see, I didn't catch it.
We tried to meld that together with what we saw from your votes, and then some other just considerations in terms of funding and other needs. So that's what we wanted to give you as sort of an overview of blending all that together. But certainly, we value other priorities that you want to factor in here. We just tried to look at our capacity and look at putting all that together for...
My big question for this, and it's on my iPad too, is, what is the opportunity tier? I mean, you know what I meant was, obviously, I knew it was things that would have a chance to move...
It's the things that they hoped we voted for that we didn't.
Exactly.
Actually, about half that list has a majority of your vote already on it, so it's not quite that way. But a number of them are ones you voted fairly high that didn't quite make the top cut, and then there's others that are just needs, or there's grant or private funding that we could leverage. So it's kind of a combination.
But I do, I do want to say, though, that I'd like to look at them in those terms then, because I did not understand whenever we got this, that it was, okay, here's what we're suggesting for your next tier.
Right.
You know, it was saying, I thought it was saying, because I knew some of them would be, you know, in a window where there might be some...
And we actually have that listed with that matrix. I can clean that up a little bit. So we took all the scoring criteria and laid that out and color-coded it. Basically, did it meet those certain scoring criteria, and it's all color-coded in a matrix, so we can provide that pretty easily.
Okay, well, listen, you know, I'd like to...
That'd be great. I've got all...
Just quickly, in some of the parks, because of the park project under opportunities, with the Parkland impact fees, you do have a timeline of the 10 years. And so those things were weighed in of where that began to take the priority, of where you had money in that quadrant for those things to happen, just to consider. Thank you.
And I'd like to see kind of what those were, too. I thought that was, yes, I bet there's a point.
Alderman Blanton.
I am pretty comfortable with all three of these lists. I will say, and I don't know how we package this, we all know that there's going to be other things that come in the next decade. But I think as we promote this to our citizens, it gets very confusing that, because if you look at it, in 2017, we did a 10-year plan. Well, it's 2019, we're doing a 10-year plan. And I think that we've got to find a way to footnote this so that people don't feel like the needs that they see that we may not be aware of, there's not even a snowball's chance of, you know what I mean? Like, very much, we talked about this situation that's been churning for a while, and now it's gotten to the point where people feel there's a huge seriousness to this, to get on it. So I think from a PR standpoint, or even just a footnote explaining this, we need to let citizens know that this is framed in a decade, but it doesn't mean that this will be all that will happen within that time period.
Right, right. Yeah, a good way to talk about it is, we have a 10-year planning horizon that we update essentially every two years. We look at it and we update capacity, we update needs, and we look at where we are. We always have to adjust on the projects you've already approved. We see that happen sometimes, too, that there's modifications we have to make. So it's always an ever-evolving 10-year window, but, and we look at it on about a two-year cycle as a way I would frame it, but that's a great suggestion.
Could I say, I like that way of saying it, because it sounds like sometimes, whenever we've said, yes, we've got this as a project, then it's like, do or die, we're going to do this one, no matter what else comes up in the way. So thinking about that it's adjusted every couple of years might be a good way to frame it.
And that's the last sentence on the last slide. Alderman Berger, you're going to get the last comment.
All right. Maybe. I think we have to look at these two in relationship to how, first of all, safety's first, always. We have to look at that. But if we're going to continue to approve office, commerce, all the things that are going on, we've got to move people. We've got to move people in and out of these commerce centers. I see it every day. It's crazy, and it's not going to improve until we make some changes. And I'm just looking at this. And then the other thing is downtown. One of the major problems we have, we all know, is parking. And so, not only for our Franklin residents, but for our visitors, and then the employees. And we really start, we need to really start addressing this now for the employees and get them out of our garages and out of, off the streets, so the visitors and the residents can actually use it. I have people that say, we don't come downtown to lunch anymore or dinner, well, mostly breakfast and lunch, they tell me, because it's too difficult, they can't get in and out. And so, when I look at priorities off of this list, I go, what's impacting the quality of life and the ability to function in our town? And we've got to do this. I mean, we have a planning commission, planning department, and BOMA approving these developments. And when we approve these residential developments, too, we've got to look at school capacity. So if we're going to look at that, I say parking downtown, and then the capacity to move traffic in our major commerce centers. And when I look at that, Mallory at Royal Oaks Liberty, and then the Jordan Road at Aspen Grove, you've got North McEwen, North Side McEwen going up, and then Franklin, is it Franklin Green? What's the one right... Mallory Green, yeah, hello. Do I live there? And McEwen Drive, the modifications at the intersection of the exchange. Those things have got to be priorities, because we've got to move the workers and the people coming in here to work every day, and the companies. So anyway, that's my two cents.
I want to make one quick comment. I'm going to ask Michael Walters-Johns to make a comment, but have we been meeting with the downtown merchants at all to discuss their parking needs recently?
Yes, sir, we've been regularly meeting with them. Vernon's been involved in...
Vernon's been involved in those meetings as well.
Yeah, I was involved in a meeting just a month ago with Paul and representatives there, and went through what we're looking at, both short-term and longer-term, and kind of went back through some of the findings of the parking study and how some of that's been implemented, what we're working with there, so.
And... And so, as we look at it, also, maybe look how we might be able to move them from a more remote lot back in. So, Michael Walters-Johns.
I just wanted to take a moment, thank you all for your attendance on a Tuesday afternoon. Secondly, it's our goal and our plan that we come back to you. We revise the 10-year CIP every two years, but that we do something like this for you every year as part of the budget process moving forward. This list basically comes to a work plan for what we would do from both construction and design moving forward, and most importantly, from the finance side of the House, make sure that the resources are there in order to do those capital projects. So we have costed everything out, year by year, for 10 years. And once we know the final priorities, as you set them, we can adjust accordingly and then report back out what we've got and what we've done.
So when you look at that final slide that's up on the screen, it talks about, we identified $301 million of capacity. We've got in this group of projects, both previously approved and the priorities and what we called that opportunity and needs group, was 281. That is looking at the capacity and structure we have today. If you want to do more, then we need to look at how our capacity is structured, okay? And what we do with things, our options, like how we have different structures in place. One of the things also, as you look at our overall structure, is in two years, we're going to have reappraisal happen. And that creates a situation where our property tax rate gets adjusted, and typically adjusted down fairly significantly because of the growth of value in the community. One concept for you to look at is to look at an increment of property tax. We did Invest Franklin that helped us do projects. We could do an increment of property tax, not maybe as much as Invest Franklin that helps us retire debt. We could do three cents, five cents, that is targeted towards debt retirement as a companion to this. That could help you a little bit with capacity, but also helps you manage debt. It's just something for you to think about. You don't need to decide it now.